All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. What we're discussing tonight is revisiting the West Mississippi River Regional Trail alignment along Dayton River Road. Staff wanted to try and get some direction of where the council would like this trail to be aligned. We presented it to the Park Commission for their input. They had two sessions where they did two different alignments. One as where we stand today with the property that is already owned by Three Rivers and the city. And the second alignment was to try and get a more scenic view of the river and take away what, you know, property would have to be bought to make that happen. So it's more of an idealized version of it. So what we'd like to do is get some input from the council tonight to see what they think would be the best alignment for this with a view to getting something back to Three Rivers Park District with, you know, this is what we would like to see and try and find some middle ground with what they want to see and what we want to see.
I take it this is the view that they want, the red versus brown?
Nope. So the map has two different contours on it. That's the colors that you're seeing on the map. So this is the same version of it with no markups on it. This one is a version of it from the Parks Commission with the versions of two different alignments.
So the darker red here is what we could do today currently, and this is what they would prefer to see if...
Pink. Pink line in there. And then the colors that you're seeing, the orange one is greater slopes of 25%.
Yeah.
And yellow is 10 to 25% slopes along the river.
Yeah.
So basically what it's trying to show and why we did that that way is to show there is contours along this river. You have to take those into consideration when you're doing a trail. You're not going to put a trail up or down a gigantic 25-foot slope, percent slope. It's just not going to happen. Sure, you can, but the dollar amount that's going to happen there is not physically possible. So we need to take that into consideration when we're looking at this map that, yeah, we might all want it next to the river.
That's just not going to happen.
It's just not going to happen. Like, it physically can't happen unless all of a sudden Three Rivers Park District's going to crap millions of dollars, which maybe they do anyways.
I mean, they seem to.
We won't be doing that, so I'm aware of that.
But it looks like their pink line pretty much is consuming all the property. Are there any properties that are not consumed by the pink line?
Yep. So you wouldn't have to purchase, I mean, I guess, sort of on this end, and you guys can't really see that there, but the far end here is the fight. So this is LC Stevens Park on this end.
Yep.
And then Gooden Park is on that end on the north side. So that's somewhat contoured to what it is today. Maybe it's upside down a little bit, but... So like these, if we looked at this parcel for the first one with Park, this was the get it today. This is long-term visioning. Either one of those has to take that house. I mean, there are trails along, even in Champlin, that have trails right along people's backyards. It is impossible to have a trail in your backyard for any house. Just because there's a trail, it doesn't mean the whole house, it doesn't mean the whole property has to go. So part of that would be, okay, this house is going to be here. Maybe we want to get an easement on the backside of their house for a trail. Does that mean that person's going to love it? I don't know. Some people might like having a trail in their backyard. People in Champlin do, so...
They have to sell the easement, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. To sell the easement. And that's part that we need to figure out as staff or what we're looking for from the direction of council is, is this a whole-taking, as in, are we buying the whole property? And now, my "we," I mean Three Rivers Park District. Or are we saying, we just want the guys to buy an easement, whether it's on the front half or the back half? The ultimate goal of this from city staff is to give Three Rivers Park District a value of, I don't know, 0 to 100, or red, yellow, green of, red is you're not buying into that property at all. You don't need it at all. Green is you can buy the whole property and you're fine. And a yellow is it's possible to go either way. The reason for that is because then we can give direction to Three Rivers Park District from city staff's perspective and city council of, this is what we want to see long-term. You don't need to buy this property at all to make your vision work, or our vision work. But we want to be in the driver's seat. That's the reason and goal for this is to look high picture, look big picture. What does the council want to see today and in the future? So I know it's difficult to envision and such, and I put Dave in a hot spot because he's looking at his house right now. So I mean, that's, it's a little difficult, and I understand that, so, yep.
Can I ask...
Does it go through your living room?
What those three, or, right in front of you, Marty?
This?
Yeah, what's that?
That's the one that's owned by Three Rivers Park District.
Got it. Okay.
So anything with a grid on it, they have it already.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay.
It's already been owned by Three Rivers Park District.
Okay.
The one that just got sold to them?
We have not put that one on yet.
Yeah, because that's going to be where...
Right next to the other one. Yep, that one there, yep.
Can we?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So it never dawned on me that trails behind the houses could work.
Yep. So I use only use Champlin as an example. There are houses, and I could show you them, that have trails in their backyards that make it...
It's still an easement.
It is, yep.
Whether it's an easement in your front yard or an easement in your backyard doesn't change the fact that it's an easement on the edge of your property.
It is an easement, but it's not the whole property.
Exactly.
Correct. Yeah. This house could stay here. This house doesn't have to go.
Either way.
You could just say, this property wants to allow an easement back here or here, or maybe this one, maybe this one wants to allow an easement and this one doesn't. So then it would meander through.
Have to curve.
Yeah. Meander through the two properties, so...
I think we need to consider feasibility too.
Yep.
You know, this, because if you want to talk about the people right next to LC Stevens Park...
Yep. I'll try to do a 3D map for you.
That pink line's not happening, you know, for 50 years, right? And so if they want to get a trail built, it's going to need to be less intrusive than that, which means along the road, I believe, to even happen. And if they, so if we're waiting for this ideal scenario, and if Three Rivers is waiting for this ideal scenario to build the trail at all, then it is 50 years out. If they're willing to build the trail with the land they own and the, right-of-way and perhaps some needed easements, you know, because of terrain, then, you know, I think we, I think generally have said, we want the trail, but not losing control over all of this land. And when I say control, I'm thinking long picture. It's all residential now, right? And it's intended to stay residential. That's what's in our 2040 plan. And it probably will still be that when we do the next one, but I, you know, I won't predict that. What I'm trying to say is that 30 years from now, do we know what that property should be? You know, is it still residential? Is the next iteration of a long-term plan, you know, something else? We determine we need more density there, or we have no choice and we have to put more density there. And so it's senior housing or it's some other configuration than it is today. If Three Rivers buys all this property, we're done, we're out, right? It belongs to them forever and we have no say what happens to it. So it's not even like our own parkland, which also stays parkland forever, as best we've been able to determine. And, but we do have some say what goes into that park. So I just want to put that out there, that that's, you know, it's more than, should we allow this homeowner or that one? It's what is the city's vision on this? And if we don't know, then we shouldn't close off all our options.
I mean, to me, if you go with the ideal scenario, all the property is bought by the park, you are indirectly telling the park, hey, we're willing to wait 50 years. You guys keep trying to buy the property and we'll, we don't need a trail for 50 years. Where it's my adage that if you're going to build the trail, let's try to get it done in the next five. That's for me.
Yeah. So we can, whatever the council wants to do for activity and drawing or whatever, we have a bunch of different colors here. You guys can make three different lines on here. The idea is for us to get a general idea from staff's perspective and so that we can provide good direction to Three Rivers Park District of what does the council see. You can do the same thing the park district did. Maybe you do one, I, you know, ideal thing or a long-term visioning of this is in the 50 to 100-year range is this line. But for now, you can do this line. You know, will Three Rivers Park District do it if it's all along the roadway? I have no idea. But if that's what the council's willing to do right now, then that's what they have to work with. So you guys are in the driver's seat, and that's why I want to make sure that you have the time to look at it and draw and adjust and make different lines and take real, take a real look at this thing, so...
We're not really in the driver's seat. I mean, we can say what we want, but they're going to build it. And if they don't want to build it in the next 20 years, that's what's going to happen.
But you're in the driver's seat for getting the properties acquired. They cannot purchase, acquire eminent domain.
Correct. That's if they're available, yeah.
Period. Any piece of property without the city council saying yes. So you are 100% in the driver's seat of saying, that's, that's why city's, staff's perspective or my perspective was to get some sort of red, yellow, green on the properties.
It seems like there's like maybe two questions. One is, you know, can you do this with the easement in the back or the front and not through the middle? If you can't, if the easement has to go right through the house...
Then, yeah.
You're done, right? I mean, that house at some point, either we have a trail and the house is sold, or you don't.
I don't think that's the case, but I also don't believe that you're going to put a bridge. That's going to cost you $2 million over this ravine. It's just not going to happen.
No.
I mean, so to point to taking this house out because it's way back on the back, it probably not makes any sense. It needs to come up this way and then it comes up again. And so I believe that you could do easement and all of it, if you needed to, for the people like the back or the front of the yard.
So you've looked at this, or has somebody looked at this and said, yeah, the trail really has no choice but to go through somebody's house?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't think there's a, maybe a couple of spots when they get really close up by David down there. Like that one house we talked about that they just approved and we just approved it. That one fortunately has a...
Well, there, but I mean, even this.
It doesn't work.
It's, you know, if you look at the hill that comes up from the road there.
Well, that's Jordan's, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's...
Yeah.
And then, of course, you got the valley down here to where he builds the birdhouses.
Yeah, correct. And so that property, you know, the house is so close to the roadway, by the time you get a trail in there, it's going to be almost right through your front stoop. So that's just not going to be, that's not going to happen without that trail. So that one's almost going to have to go at some point. And I don't say have to go because we don't want it there, but because if you want a trail there, it's not going to work.
But they own the two next to them.
Yep.
That could be a point where, you know, this, I hadn't thought about this idea of putting trail through people's backyards.
I hadn't either, yeah.
But this may be, you know, an option there, right?
Very possible.
That it could, because you got to come back out when you get to here anyway.
I don't know how far it goes either way, but that's bottom land also.
Yeah, the same map is here, so if you're looking...
I think Jordan's property would need to go right through.
Right, ah, boy.
Jordan's property is right... What are you looking for?
I'm trying to look at the Jordan's.
With unmarked, right here.
So basically, there's land behind that slope that you could put something behind there.
There is, it's just, it's...
Slo land, but it's trail, we're talking about a trail here. It can flood. Nothing on there that can't flood.
You know, and most of that is, at least if I'm reading it right, not in the marked flood plain.
Might be in the flood, what's the, what's the next spot?
The 50-year or 100-year?
100-year thing?
Floodway or something like that, or flood plain.
Floodway is much more restrictive.
Okay, floodway.
Because that's guaranteed every year to, can you put payment in?
No, floodway is, it's creating restrictions for the flow instead of...
You could put a trail there, though. I would, I would think you'd be able to put a trail there, though, because there's nothing stopping the water.
You can if you do the right studies and construct it right. So there's ways to mitigate and accomplish it. It's just, it goes through a lot more scrutiny and review with the floodway.
We have no idea what the park prefers as far as dollars spent either, right?
Zero.
So my personal vote is to, I would love to see something connecting from the Historic Village to LC Stevens within the next five years, like, if we can. I would, I would also like to go with easements and not purchases of property, were, at all possible. And if it's possible to do all of it with easements, that would be my preference, because to Dave's point, that keeps us, we can, you know, we can at some point decide to buy it, you know, to let this, that the Three Rivers buy it and turn it all into parkland, but it gives us options, whether that is some high-end apartments or whether it's senior housing, or whether it's even just a small commercial, like with the bed and breakfast, and, you know, like to like really right by the park and think about who might be coming through and if this is the start of a longer trail and like a little cafe or a little restaurant, something where someone on the trail can pull off, have a nice lunch, and keep on going, right? Like, if we still, if that is still city, like, if that's still land that's out there, it gives us choices. So I'd prefer easements whenever possible. I had not considered the back of a yard easement instead of the front of the yard easement. That, I think, makes the easement option even more possible than like, just, when it was just the front yard, I was like, ooh, there are some spots where it's tough. But when, as soon as we open up, you can put an easement, it's on the property line is the point, right? So it doesn't have to be the front property line. It can be the back property line. So that would be my, my opinion is, whenever possible, go with easements. Some of these properties, like these two, I think that's where we contact the current owner and say, we would like an easement for a trail. The option is the front of your property or the back of your property. They might say it's the back, like, no way to the back of the property, but we'll accept the front of the property. But I think it's worth the ask, particularly because I know some people have been really concerned. And if it's like, hey, we can get this trail in, would you be willing to have the easement in the back of your property instead? I think there are definitely people who would say, yeah, I'm okay with that. If that means you're going to leave my house alone, like, sign me up. So, so that would be my, my standpoint is easements only. Contact the property owners, particularly where there's, where there is a preference for the backyard easement, if at all possible. And it looks like there's only the one that's really going to be a logistical issue. And that, bless you, might be where we have a really serious conversation about whether or not it can go, particularly if the, if the park owns the stuff next to it. That does seem like a backyard easement might be the best option for that one to preserve their house, but still, still get a trail in. But I'd really like to see this trail and, from LC Stevens to the Historic Village in the next, I mean, in the perfect universe where a giant pot of money falls on our heads, I would love to see this kind of happen at the same time as the water trails do. So like, we have like this complete loop in place. Do we know, Marty, when, like, do you have any timeline on the water trails? Like, when those are, where we think are going to be finished?
They could be finished next year.
Oh, okay, yeah. So that's not going to happen. Never mind. So five years. So no pot of money would get the trail done in a year, so...
Would this, would this be better to be right-of-way or an easement? And I don't know that answer. I'm, the only reason I ask is because I'm wondering if right-of-way would actually reduce these people's taxes. I don't know that it would do it much. But you might lose access to the river too.
Yeah. If it's in the back of the property towards the river, I think you'd do easement. Because there's no point in having right-of-way there, because there's never going to be a road that goes along that area. If it's along the front edge, we might want to save maybe right-of-way? Just because then the county could say, we could utilize that right-of-way for something else along with an expansion of the road to be able to help with those things. So that would reduce this person's, you know, tax valuation.
Do you, and maybe you know this, do you get taxed because you're on the river? Is that a significant hit or not?
I don't know how that's arrived at. I mean, waterfront has always been more expensive, so I assumed so, but I...
But is it expensive because it's wanted or because it's technically, because the assessors can say, hey, you're on the river?
Right. I don't know that there's a special mechanism in the tax code that says you're...
I think it's waterfront, though. If you're on the waterfront, there's more tax.
Well...
But that's, this is considered waterfront property.
If there's right-of-way there, I would think it would be then. I don't...
Oh, along the backside you're talking?
Yeah.
Sure.
I don't, I have no...
I don't know that.
It's just easement lets you still have access to, to that. So it's brilliant.
Does the council want to do an updated line so they have an idea of what you guys are thinking? Do you want to just use the two park ones and say, these are fine in the middle, or...
I still, I mean, originally, we asked Rivers to give us where we, where they had to take the house. I thought we did. Where they had to take the house because they had no other choice.
They never gave that to us.
And because to me, maybe that gives us an idea of, okay, you can make offers on these properties. But these, we're looking at easements. I don't...
I think I, that might be the case. I wanted to put us in the driver's seat of telling them what we wanted to see versus them telling us which ones aren't going to work for the trail.
Right, except I'm not sure I have the expertise, maybe if we can suck up a lot of Jason's time. We could, you know, see where the trail really needed to be.
Sure.
Is this just the line that they drew?
Yep.
Okay. So they didn't look at it from the standpoint of, it's got to be here?
And no, it's not. It's where they were prepared, where it made sense for them to put it and where, you know, it was leased impinging on properties and stuff, because they were very red, didn't want to put anything on there because they were very cognizant that they were going to be going through people's properties, so...
They went through Jordan's house because they had to.
Had to, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's what they, that's what they thought was...
With the pink line.
That's the, oh, yeah.
But the brown line is following the road.
The brown line follows the road for as much property as possible with what Three Rivers Park District owns today.
Yep.
The pink line was the ultimate 50 to 100-year build. I don't, I personally believe there's probably a mix of both of those that are going to work the best. And that's why I would like the council to get a good idea of, okay, maybe we like the pink line here, but we like the brown line over here. Or pick a different color and draw on the thing so we have an idea, or something different. So that staff has a good direction from what council feels with park input of what they thought was the best option.
Right. And I think your point of like, sure, like this pink line right there, right where the ravine is, that's just not going to happen.
You're not going to put...
There's a giant bridge. It's going to cross...
A $1.5 million bridge for a pedestrian. It's just not going to happen.
It's not going to happen. There's no universe that happens. So...
Well, they're, I mean, I don't disagree that it doesn't make any sense.
Okay, there you go.
Their, their plan up until we said, put the brakes on this, was to acquire all of it. And that was going to be $25 million by the time they got done.
They got money for that bridge.
So they didn't, you know, that didn't scare them off.
They seem to have different pots of money, though, for land acquisition versus actually building the trail. And from, obviously, I don't know, I don't know anything. This is just from what was said and what wasn't said. It sounded like the magic pot of money for buying land is much bigger and deeper than the pot of money for actually building the trail. That was my impression from the conversation. So, and I don't know if that's because buying land, like, you can just sit and hold it and hold it and hold it and hold it and then, and then eventually build the trail, but like, I don't know. It seemed like they were two completely separate pots of money.
Getting the trail built.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that, the one to buy land...
Because they're getting legacy funds and lottery money and other stuff that gets funneled through the Met Council and says, go buy parkland.
Yeah. But like, that seems way deeper, where the actual putting the trail in seems like a much smaller pot of money. So to that, however many million-dollar bridge, I just don't, you can build almost the rest of the trail for that practically. I mean, I don't actually know that, but it seems like that would not make sense to me. So I feel like that's, that pink line is never going to happen, no matter what, right there in that little spot. These two houses, easy easement either way.
So do you guys want to go through property by property and I can write easement or full take or? I don't mean that tomorrow, but I mean, I'm looking for directions with you guys. I'm trying to just give you tools and then...
One other comment I want to make is that, you know, we're talking about a bike, a bike trail here, right? And so if at some point down the road, you know, they come into a less hostile situation than I present around this, and they acquire more land, we're talking about moving a bike trail, right? This is like moving my driveway over, right? This is not millions of dollars of wasted money to, to, now, now they've got this, you know, this whole stretch so they don't need to be doing this. They can, you know, do something more, something else, and they're talking about 10 feet of asphalt.
Right. 20 years, they can change it if they wanted to.
Yeah.
So I don't think that, you know, my interest, or my feeling around this is that they use the land that they've got and they get this thing built. And if there is something, they can, they come back to us and say, you know, it's, it's all good, except we got to have this and we got to have this, then we, then we can talk about that. But kind of this open, you know, we'll, we'll acquire it whenever somebody contacts us, is, we're completely out of control on how that's going, or had been, anyway. And so I, you know, this has already been planned for 10 years. And the only trail that's been built is what we built in LC Stevens and Cloquet, right? So to get this thing to move along, I mean, to Sarah's point, you know, we wanted it yesterday, the trail, right? And, you know, what gets us there? Well, I'd say they, I say they have enough to, you know, with some easement negotiation to, to get a trail here. And if it, they've got opportunity to move it in the future, we can talk about that then. It's not, it's not killing anything. I also think it's silly to not be, you know, completely engaged with the county and the road reconstruction. And I know they've said that, well, you don't, they're not planning that stretch yet. They will be, and at the pace this thing is moving, it's certainly, there's certainly time for these things to...
So that would be up to here.
Are you saying?
Or, or here on this mountain.
So what you're saying is stick with the...
The brown line, essentially, yeah.
Yeah. My adage is, is to build it with the road and go to the park and say, hey, if you get this built with the road, 75-25, we'll go in on it with you. Otherwise, it's their bill. That gets it done fast.
You know, Scott, with money, he just throws it around.
Until you don't.
Well, yeah. So, so my vote is to go the easement route, not the purchase route, if we can. I, and I, I don't know these people, so I have no idea.
Won't happen.
Okay.
Won't happen.
Okay. Then it's the one by the road. And I don't know, so really, it's just the one close up here where by the road is just not, like, the slope makes by the road.
There's a few, yeah, there's a few houses, I was saying, in that little stretch area where it's just so tight between trail and the hollow set.
All right. So what do we do with that? Go ahead, you were going to say something.
I have another question. I'm with you on, along the road, because having that in my back, I'd be not very happy. I would not be willing to give you, to put a trail behind my house on the river. Like, that's why you buy the house on the river? Just going to throw that out there?
Sure.
But my question is, is if a property owner and it worked out was okay with that, would we be okay?
With the easement?
Behind.
Behind?
So if you told Three Rivers, hey, we see it along the road, not taking properties, working with what you have, there's a couple that are going to be tricky, like, we can talk about those as that comes, like, you know, we can negotiate that or see what, like, works. But if they approached a property owner and said, hey, we want to put this behind along the river, and the property owner's like, yeah, cool, knock yourself out, just in a perfect world, we would be okay with that?
Yeah, I would be.
Okay.
Yeah, the landowner's fine with it.
Because it's an easement.
So giving them the direction that it can be either or, but if the property owner says, nope, then you're on the road, like, that's it.
As long as...
As long as it works out.
As long as they want to make the big U.
Correct. I mean, they can figure all those logistics out. They're not going to do it for one and then come back out and like that would...
Yeah, they're not going to do some of the problems. They're not going to, the one you just pointed you to, they're not going to go way deep in that one.
No, it would be silly to do that. But let's say that, you know, those ones that are a little trickier in the perfect world, if they were able to go behind and if you own the ones next to it, they could come through... if they were able to go behind and if you own the ones next to it, they could come through however they needed to, go behind. I'm just thi- thinking of ways that we can give flexibility so that way the, still gets built. People don't, we're not going right through their living room, you know what I mean? Cause that, that doesn't, it feels icky, right? To say, oh yeah, we're gonna trail right through. Like, it doesn't give them any flexibility, so I guess my stance would be, go ahead and ask, and if you can make it work, and they wanna make it work, the property owners to go behind, go ahead. I don't see that happening. Um, and I am not okay with them purchasing more land to make it. I think they've got enough to make it work, other than that sticky.
Easement's on, on either side, but don't take the house.
Correct.
So that Jordan that you guys are talking about, I don't know him, but is that the guy that was here that, he said, if the trail went in front of my house, you're just about gonna be on my porch?
No, that was the one who used to prove to the last council meeting.
Oh, that was just one of them.
Yeah, okay.
He's the one with the, the birdhouses.
But he's right next to it.
Okay.
He's, yeah.
It's like, a drop off there.
That was Myers.
And I don't know what his thought is, but if-
Jerry?
Yeah.
Oh.
If the, if they came through and said, hey, like, the trail's coming through and like negotiated to go behind, we would be fine with that. If, if, I'm saying in a perfect world.
I think he'd be, yeah, he'd be fine if it was up to him.
Better that than we need to take your house, or we need your whole property.
He might be more ready to sell, I don't-
I, I think those are-
And that's, that's kinda how this conversation started, is I think some of the homeowners are here, are older and they're looking to retire or move or whatever, and they're like, give me whatever you can for the property. That's what's kinda started this conversation, I think, cause I think most of these have been acquired in the last five years. Maybe I'm wrong.
It accelerated, yeah.
Yeah.
It accelerated.
It's been a lot more.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and, yeah, my problem is what Sarah said, and I, I just, you, you're taking away all the options when you buy the whole chunk.
Sure.
And you are locking up that revenue. We get zero from parkland.
Yeah, I mean, if you leave it like-
And they consume services.
If you look at this property here and you, you know, leave it as two options, there's a lot of property between those two. You could do a lot of things with that property.
Yes, you could.
If you take away this whole thing and they need a trail, it's only ten feet wide.
Yeah.
You've just, I, I don't disagree with you that you've taken all this land and just removed it, which doesn't make any sense to me. Cause you could put, easily put senior living or apartment buildings or even a bed and breakfast or whatever you guys wanna talk about here.
Something.
And have a trail along the thing, and that might be somebody's perfect idea. I mean, you have it all over in Duluth, like Superior. They have trails right along the back. They have an apartment building or hotel right in front of it.
Yeah.
That's-
It's one of the selling points to that thing, like when you have, like, when you, you know, I'm thinking of, it's an amenity.
Come live here, how beautiful this is, jump on the trail, walk down, do your kayaking.
And that's what I mean. I think these two are, these two make no sense to purchase the whole thing.
No.
There might be some down there that you have to, just based on topography and, and where the houses at.
Okay.
So-
But I think those are one offs, right? Like those are, it's not every property. It should be, this is a special situation. Y- yeah, it shouldn't be a chunk like it has.
David, take the pen and draw the line.
Well, we can just leave it as-
You can leave whatever, yeah. You don't have to, you want to.
Erase the pink one and, okay, we're there.
Well, and I don't even mind leaving the pink one there, cause it does show like where back easements might be an option. Like these would be, and maybe not for today, but in the future, if they sell and we put apartment buildings here, we could easily put the trail behind the apartment building. And that could be part of like, when that developer comes in, we can say, yeah, but you need to give an easement to build this trail closer so that we can get, like, that could be part of that agreement.
I think that can be part of the discussion.
Yeah.
I am reluctant to say have it on any plan.
Okay.
Because Three Rivers then can say, well, the city said they were okay with it.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah, this isn't gonna be given anywhere. This is directly, this isn't like you guys are approving anything. This is directly discussions.
Yeah.
You guys aren't approving anything, adopting anything tonight?
Well, no, but-
But I think putting it together somehow where the, where, where saying that if the landowner prefers it on the, on the riverside, you know, that that's something we're amenable to.
Yes, yes. Any place where the landowner is am- amenable to the easement being on the riverside, I'm okay with. And I think it is just a matter of identifying which few we would be open for purchases in the future. And I would never be okay with the Three Rivers buying these two or even, yeah, I was at that whole chunk.
Anything up, anything up to the expert, basically.
Yes.
To me, and maybe it's even further than that, but that's at least a minimum.
And they already own that chunk.
They do.
We already lost, we, we biffed it on that one.
Those are, well, these are two giant ravines too, and the ravine goes all the way onto here.
Yeah.
Those are the ones they just redid a couple of years ago.
But yeah, so this chunk I would never be okay with, and there's that chunk right there, which I think is a lot of nice land that could, we could have something nice there.
Tree farm. That's a tree farm.
Yeah. Um, again, there's some, like, that's a good chunk of buildable land. I'd hate to have all gone. Um, and it's really, Dave, unfortunately, it's just your little stretch right there that like, or that little stretch right there, I think, that gets kinda tricky. That I could, cause the floodplain comes up, so no one can build.
It, it could be difficult to, to get right away there, that makes sense.
Yeah.
They may need to take all property, but I think we're saying, we want them to justify needing to take all property.
Yes, at this point, yeah, no-
To buy the whole property.
That's, that's the consensus I'm hearing from this point.
The other thing, you know, that I wanna, wanna remind us of is that, um, you know, this is kind of on the, on the notion that if you get the bike trail over by the river, then you get this glorious view of the river. It's not there in the summertime, honestly. I have a hole about this big through my deck that I can look through the trees and actually see the river until October. All winter long, it's a fantastic view. Nobody's biking then. Nobody's biking then.
Yeah.
Right? Well, John's biking, but I'm not biking. But it's, but the idea that when the majority of the use is gonna be, Three Rivers can't do it either. They can't come through and cut down all the trees. We can't cut down all the trees because of the Mississippi corridor thing. That's a hundred pages long about the rules that we have to follow.
Right, yeah.
And so the, it's not gonna, we're not gonna change the view of it, cause we're, you know, cause they have to follow those rules too. So, the need to get it over next to the-
The river. You were really not next to the river.
Get you much.
Yeah. One, you're at the top of the slope. The slope goes down. Like, even here, cause right here's the floodplain, here's the giant slope, and here's the trail. So it's still like, you're gonna look across-
The only spot that you could really get maybe a good view is probably behind Jerry Jordan's house, unfortunately, because once you get down the slope, then it's, you're right on the river and then you're, that might be a good spot.
Goes down to that ravine.
Yeah, but it's a twenty-five foot slope to get down there, so you're either doing swi- switchbacks or nothing. So I mean, you're not taking the whole thing and just, unless some odd day is becoming a super biker and we're mountain biking.
Everybody's on electric bikes. They go up hills and stuff.
Sure.
It, it is, actually.
That might be the only spot I could see along the river, and I think, cause our fashion's point is, is exactly right. There's only so many spots that'll work where, otherwise you're just seeing the trees, which are-
Still pretty, but like, it's not, it's for what you're giving up. What, yes.
Your benefit isn't the same as what you're-
Trails in Dome Creek Park Reserve that you can see trees through the entire time. You know, that twenty percent of Dayton that we have already lost.
Given up.
Yeah.
Tell me how you really feel. I'm just kidding.
No, and, and it's real weird for me to be talking, you know, this way to say, I don't wanna acquire parkland. I mean, I started out, well, after the Safety Commission, but I was on the Parks Commission for a bunch of years before I came here. You know, I've been promoting parks my entire time that I've lived in this city. So that's, this is not where I'm coming from on this, and it feels weird to be taking the other side of it, but in this case, I, this is how I feel, and I try to keep the fact that I live right here out of it as much as I can, but it's not actually possible.
No, but your perspective's important, right? Cause like, I don't know what the river looks like from behind there. In my mind, it's just you see the whole river and it's beautiful. You watch all the rushing water and you're like, well, actually, there's your wind. You know, it's like, those are important details. I appreciate you saying those things.
It is, I think, an important supply of legacy homes, and it lets residents live on the river, and if that disappears, it's gone forever.
There's only so many spots.
To Sarah's point, we lose control. We can't put a bed and breakfast over there in forty years. We, we can't do things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Unless it's all gone.
Is this sufficient direction, or do you feel like you need more from us?
This is, it seemed pretty con, uh, let's say, consensus across the group, it seems pretty unanimous of where we're at, which is great. And that gives us good direction to give back Throughs Park District. It's best if it's, you know, everybody on the same page, cause it's easy to say, this is what we think and that's it. It's hard when we have somebody who's over here that says, we want the whole thing, and one person over here says, don't, don't touch a single thing.
Yeah.
We don't want the trail at all. It doesn't sound like I'm hearing that at all from this group, and it sounds like it's more, try to work with what you got as much as you can. If we have a problem in some spot, come talk to us, and we'll figure out if that's gonna work.
Yeah.
This is good direction for me to give to Three Rivers Park District, because they are asking me at staff level going, what are we doing? And I'm saying, I need to get direction from my council before I give you a direction back.
One, and I can say, cause some of these property owners have reached out to me, cause Dave is trying very hard to stay neutral in, in this. So I've got, I've gotten a lot of people who talk to me about it. Um, and every single one of them has been like, I'm fine with the trail. Like, we, we knew a trail was coming. I, I'm actually wondering where my trail is. I've been looking forward to this trail, cause I was like, it's been on paper for how many years now that there's gonna be a trail? There's gonna be a trail, there's gonna be a trail. It's just, where's my trail? Um, and instead of getting a trail, I feel like they wanna buy my house. It's like that, that feels like, what the heck? So I, I've never been opposed to the trail, and I've never heard a single person be opposed to the trail. The only s- what?
You might. I might be opposed to it? Oh, these two might, oh yeah. Oh yeah, these, I can guarantee.
I haven't heard from them. Yeah, I have not heard from them, but like, all the residents who have reached out to me with concerns have all said, we knew a trail was gonna be here. We've been looking actually forward to a trail because we would like to get out and bike, and right now we have a busy road that's not safe to take my kids on. I would love a safe trail to go biking on. Like, I'm okay with that. It's just, not only am I not getting my trail, they're buying it my house. So like, I, I think a trail, but make the trail happen through easements and, and just work with the property owner about what easement's gonna make sense, and it's probably gonna be near the road for most of it. And I think we need to be a little more honest with ourselves about like, what view you would actually get. Even if you could buy it all, you aren't getting this beautiful river view that you, that in your head.
Well, it's like in Cloquet overlook, they got the overlook there, and all you see is trees from the overlook.
Yeah.
That is, I don't know, said a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
This is not overlooked.
Yeah. But I mean, I think-
They had unlimited money, maybe.
But maybe that's where we need to take some of these people who are all about this river trail and be like, here, look at the overlook, and what are you overlooking? Yeah, okay, so that's where you're, you're, you're gonna spend all of this money to acquire all of this land. And for what? So you can have a tree lined trail, which you could have a tree lined trail lots of places.
I don't, you know, if we have an expectation they're gonna do this in, in the next five years, I do think they're gonna have big issues over, over by that property. I don't know how they do that in five years, but I guess-
Talking about the one here in the corner?
No, the, this whole area.
Oh, that whole area there, yep.
Um, with Jordan's property is specifically problematic, cause I don't know how they put that trail next to the road either, cause it's just-
Yeah, you can't. Because there's gonna be problems that are gonna have to, that we're gonna have to solve here, and it's gonna have to be a partnership at some point.
Now one they may have.
One of them goes this way and one of them goes this way, so I mean, you got, they're got a huge hill up or a huge hill down, and neither one of those works well with the trail. So, I mean, again, you can move dirt all you want to, but at some point it's gonna become feasible.
Well, I think we've all acknowledged, right, that it's gonna be a sticky point and that we're all gonna work together and, you know?
Yeah. As long as they, you know, as long as, you know, when, when residents call them and they say, look, we, here's our, here's our direction.
So do we want to identify which properties we would be open to possibly selling if the homeowners wanted to and which ones that we would never say yes to? Or are we not?
I don't know if we wanna point it down.
Okay.
Back on them.
Well, guys, and only because of, that's kind of on them, right, to determine, okay, we can't do it in front here. This is why, and to justify their need to buy them, cause I get what you're saying, but I get a little cautious with that because it's like, oh yeah, like, it's almost like offering, like, you can have all these pieces of pie, like-
How about the other way? Could you do ones that are absolutely, now we would never sell those? So, I'm trying to get-
Couldn't you then back out the other?
Nope, cause you could say that, that's, you know-
Oh, it's just a couple?
Yeah, like-
Until they get an engineer to look at it, I don't know that-
I'm just saying like, we know these two, I'll use these two in the end. I guarantee you that if they come to either one of us, or any of the councils said, we wanna purchase this one and this one, you guys would go-
No way.
No way. Why would I do that?
No universe.
So that's why I say this, these, these two are extorted, in my opinion.
My concern would be, if we specified, say, five of these, and the rest of them, they might think they're up for grabs. I, I mean, to me, they need to prove that they need the whole thing.
Sure.
Yeah, that's how I feel about it too.
Yeah.
Yeah, the burden of proof is on them to justify.
So, yeah, I was trying to start off with the red, yellow, green. Everything's yellow, that's what it sounds like. Everything's just, we're, proceed with caution, but you might not be able to go, or you might not be able to stop for the two, but. Which is fine, and that's, that's the least direction for us as staff, which helps.
Before we leave, can we also acknowledge the fact that, like, and thank the Parks Commission, cause they went through and drew all these pretty lines on here? And the having the easement in the back never occurred to me.
Yeah.
Like, that was never even on my radar, and so I guess just saying that, like-
Well, and as you said, these two current property owners may be a hard no to the back, but knowing that it's a possibility in the future-
Or for any, right? Like, that it is even, like, something we could do, I think is-
When did they get that land? Eighteen forty-eight? So they've been hanging on to it for a while.
Belize has been a long time.
It's been somewhere around there.
They were also very, very adamant about getting the trail built as soon as possible, the park commission was.
Yeah, the park commission wants to see it. I think everyone wants to see the trail, because it's a good connection point for everybody. I agree.
I agree too.
But it's just, they're not just gonna put a trail-
I was more acknowledging their effort, and that like, they brought something that I had never even thought about, which is, you know, what you want, right? It's the meeting of the minds, this is your area, like, things that we don't think about, so. And it mattered. I guess it was the whole thing. It's like their work mattered, I must have been the point.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, you know, that, well, what we wanted to get was a voice back into this thing. And we've achieved that, and I think that, you know, if you look at the context of their charge, the Parks Commission, you know, what would the ideal thing look like from a parks perspective? It's not their job for, to think about what goes in the twenty forty or the twenty fifty or the twenty sixty comp plan. That's our job. And so, you know, I appreciate that they can take that narrower focus and come up with something that we hadn't considered, so. You know, I, I agree with you. I appreciate their time that they spent on it. It's still the brown line.
You're not wrong.
All right, are we, Jerry?
Anything else you guys wanna talk about or discuss?
John is one of my neighbors and I don't know if you still wanna make a comment, John, if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Hey, um, I, yeah, I, I've lived here for fifty years on Dayton Road. I ride a bike a thousand fifteen hundred miles a year. So I'll, I'll ride downtown Minneapolis for lunch. I ride to Buffalo. One thing you have to consider is me. A high speed bikes bicyclist is not a kid. I find, in many cases, I won't ride on a, a, a path, a bike path, because it's far too dangerous.
Okay.
So, and you need to consider this. So if I'm going twenty miles an hour on a bike path and there's an intersection, I can't see behind me, I don't know if somebody's turning right. So I have to stop, and then it's a big pain to get moving ahead, so, so I'll tend to ride on the shoulder. Uh, would I ride this? I would ride some of it. There are some things here, it's like the, the path in Champlin. I'll never go on that path. I would die. I would be dead before I'd get all the way into Champlin, honestly. So, that's a very dangerous place. So, as it, as you're, what appears to, by the way, I've wanted this bike path forever. You have to consider who's riding, what does it look like? As I listened, I think there, there, in your minds, you have this picture of people using it. And kids will use it. I won't, I, I might use part of it. I would rather be on the shoulder. I've, I've rode Dayton Road before, had any shoulder. I didn't like that very much. This is way better. I'll now ride this except for a couple of hours during the day at rush hour when semis are going back, going by. You give me another foot, I'd ride on the, I'd ride on Dayton Road and be just as happy and say, by the way, I have radar on my bike, so I know who's coming behind me. So, talking to people that actually ride, that do ride trails, that do ride roads, um, and, and do it a lot, uh, that's different than kids riding it and having dogs in the way and, and so forth. So, I, I do ride in Dome Creek. I love it. I drive, I ride it usually when nobody's around because then I, I don't have to worry about dogs and, and kids and so forth. Um, I've wanted to have a trail here for a long time I've wanted to have a trail here for a long time, just because Dayton Road hasn't been safe for, and it's not safe at rush hour for me. But consider who's going to be riding it. Is it going to be safe for somebody that's riding fifteen, twenty miles an hour? Most of the people that I see coming by the road, on the road right now are, I would call a high-speed bicyclist. Uh, that's who's on this. We have people that are riding cross-country. They're coming from Oregon and they're, they're heading out to the east coast. So, um, this is a well, it, well, it's part of the Great River Road, you know, we, we have that. So it's, it, it's interesting. So when you look at this and you consider it, who's going to be on it? You know, can you imagine that I'm going to be on it? You, nineteen that goes down toward, you know, fifty-five, I'll never ride that.
Okay.
That, because it's too dangerous for me when I'm traveling, you know, twenty miles an hour. At every, ev- every driveway, every intersection, I'm afraid. When I'm on the shoulder, I'm part of the traffic.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And I've got lights on and I'm watching, I'm looking in the mirror, but I'm part of the traffic. I'm in a place where somebody that's driving a car expects to see me. When cars, if you're in a, you'll say this, if, if you're in a car, you don't see anybody on a bike trip. You don't see them. You don't, you're looking on the road, you're not looking on the trail that's even ten feet away.
Yeah.
You just don't see them.
That makes sense.
So.
It's, is it a multi-use trail or is it for like, a, a bike for like transportation versus like just a pleasure? I'm out for a pleasure ride with my kids.
At trailhead, they, they've got a Wednesday night, uh, bike that they do about twenty, thirty mile an hour. And, and I see them on south Diamond Lake Road, north Diamond Lake Road, so they ride there.
Yeah.
And, um, they'll ride through the park. Uh, we've even been on Dayton Road, you know? So, so those people are going to want to use it, but we wanna be safe also. So I bet you nobody ever thought about a bike trail is less safe than the road.
Yeah.
And so, so it's, it's just, um, when I imagine this, I, I think I imagine using this differently than you see it.
Yeah.
And, and like I say, I've lived there a long time and, and who I see riding that road right now is not kids, thankfully.
Yeah.
But it's a high-speed bicyclist that, that goes out and does a, a twenty to fifty mile ride during the day.
Yeah.
So just, and I mean, there are good resources. If you wanna learn more, if you wanna get appeal for who, who uses this, there are people like me that you can talk to and just kind of imagine. So I think you're doing great work. I, I also agree, uh, that, um, if the trail does this, well, it's Elm Creek. Okay, right, I love riding over there, but I don't think that this is a good place for another Elm Creek trail. It, this would be a nice place. I've always wanted a trail to get to Elm Creek.
Yeah, to and from trail.
Yeah, right. So anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you guys. I mean, it's, uh, we'll see. We'll, we'll see if my house sells before, uh, if it actually sells before.
Before the trail gets built?
Yeah.
Fingers crossed the trail gets built.
Alright, thank you.
I got good direction from the council, so unless you guys need anything else, we're good to go.
Okay.